At this time, we'll call to order the Iredell County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, September 18th, 2018. At this time, I'd like you to please join with us and bow our heads in a moment of silent prayer or reflection, especially thinking about the blessing and the grace that we received with the absence of serious injury or damage due to Hurricane Florence in Iredell County. Keep in your thoughts and prayers those who are not as fortunate. If you'll please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is that the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone to a sunny, dry day for our meeting and ask if Ms. Jones will please summarize any adjustments to the agenda.
Thank you Chairman Mallory. We do have three adjustments. The first is to remove item 8.9 from Administrative Matters. This will be put back on the agenda for October the 2nd. This is the NCAA legislative goals and the NCAA has extended that deadline, so we're going to push that back for the October 2nd meeting. The second item is to add Kent Green, our Emergency Management Fire Services Director for appointments before the Board, to give us a debriefing on Hurricane Florence. The final item is to add item 8.11 under Administrative Matters regarding a letter of support for states for airports application for an FAA grant.
Thank you Ms. Jones. Is there any further adjustments to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. We don't have any special recognitions or awards this evening, but we do have two appointments under item six. Our first is Mr. John Ferguson, who is the Stateful Regional Airport Manager, to share with us a grant opportunity with the North Carolina Department of Transportation Aviation Division.
Thank you Commissioners. I'm always happy to come up and announce that we've got another federal grant or state grant for improvements to the airport. This one is a $750,000 project to replace the instrument landing system electronics that helps guide the airplanes to the runway during inclement weather. Now, this is to replace the electronic guts, you might say. The grant is $675,000 and the remaining 10%, $75,000, we'd like to split with the city and the county. So, we're asking for $37,500 for the county's share.
Is a budget amendment going to be required?
Yes, and that was on the bench before you, is Budget Amendment Number 12 that was prepared and put on the table before you. And if the Board wishes to do this, we propose taking this from the Project Development Fund.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ferguson or comments? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the $37,500 in matching funds for Statesville Airport, Budget Amendment 12, and take the revenue from the Project Development Fund.
Motion by Commissioner Hump. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign, motion carries unanimously. We appreciate the great work you're doing to put the Statesville Airport on the map in a big way, but keep it out of the Charlotte controls.
Thank you very much, and we certainly thank you for your support.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask, John, on item number 811, the letter of support for the Airport FAA Project Adjustment Grant, I just wanted John to elaborate on that a little bit, update the Board. Thank you.
Okay. There was an announcement of a new pot of money from the FAA of a billion dollars for airport developments at medium and small-size airports. They were not for the Charlottes and the Atlantas and the Chicagos. There was two deadlines. One was in September for airports that were named in the budget appropriation. There was like Asheville and Jacksonville and Concord, the small air carrier airports, and then very rural airports were added to, as named in the grant. They were supposed to submit shovel-ready projects by the end of September, or early September. The second deadline was for all other airports, which is what we're applying for. We are applying for three projects, and one of the things that the FAA never considers in their grants is economic impact or economic development. All the FAA cares about is safety, security, capacity, and protection of the approaches, and that's really so buying, I'm sorry, land off the ends of the runways. This grant has economic development, so they want to know if these projects will either benefit the tenants in some way or benefit the sponsor, which would be the city or the county. So, the first of, oh, we had an overhead here last night. So, the first project we're looking at is, we're working on the southeast parallel taxiway now. We've got a $9.8 million grant, another 100% grant, so it didn't cost us anything. We're working on that now, so the project we're submitting is now the other half of the taxiway, and that is a $14.3 million project. That will, of course, open up land for development, for future hangars, so that is economic development. It also will allow all the NASCAR airplanes and the private carriers on that south end to taxi to the end of the runway without, it's a shorter taxi, so they save fuel. The second project we're looking at is adding a thousand-foot safety area to the west end of the runway. It's a thousand feet of dirt. The runway, our runways have to have a thousand-foot safety area, and since our runway goes right up to the edge of Bethlehem Road, we have to stripe the end of the runway a thousand feet in. So, basically, we've got about 60, 200 feet, something like that, on the end. This thousand-feet safety area would give us the full access of the asphalt. What this does is, the private carriers like Victory Air, who has 10 50-passenger jets flying out there now, and Champion Air, who has three 50-passenger jets, they will be able to take on full loads of fuel. For example, just this past weekend, they had the race in Las Vegas. All those jets had to stop in Tulsa for fuel. If we had a full 7,000-foot runway, they could have gone nonstop to Vegas. That would have cut out that middle fueling, which they have to buy at retail, whereas on our airport, they have their own tanks, so they're getting gas at cost. So, this will be a major economic impact to the tenants, plus they'll buy more gas, and we get a fuel flowage fee, so it helps us. The last project we're asking for is the corporate hangar development site. We're already asking for about $2.3 million from the state to develop about two and a half acres for pad-ready sites, so that if a company comes in and says, "We want to build a hangar for our $20 million jet, where can we go?", and we'll have a pad-ready site for them to go to. What we're asking for in this asking is to develop the whole 30 acres that we purchased last year from Judge Collier. So, this is another $14 million project. If they're 100%, let's go for the whole kit and caboodle. So, those are the three, and that would be a major economic impact to us, because we would be able to have hangars built, you would have multi-million-dollar jets, which would be taxed. So, it's, those are the three big safety and economic development projects we're asking for. Hopefully, if we keep our fingers crossed, we might get one out of three. Two out of three would be wonderful, and three out of three would probably be impossible, but we'll shoot for it anyway. But, we're competing with all the other airports across the country.
Well, if you need us to write three separate letters, be happy to do that. We're in, with both feet on that.
Great.
Thank you, John. Our federal partners also are doing a letter of support, Ted Budd, I think, was it Virginia Fox, John?
Both Virginia Fox and Ted Budd signed one letter, both signatures, and then we got a wonderful letter from the NASCAR organization in support of the airport. I mean, those are our, that and Lowe's are our biggest tenants out there, and are probably our biggest entities that are taxed.
Thank you, John.
Because Victory's got 10 planes, and they're about $2.2 million each, they got $20 million worth of airplanes. So, it's...
And those pad-ready sites on our airport commission, and John will tell you, they would be instrumental in growth and that additional runway space. That would be phenomenal for this area, impact-wise.
Mr. Ferguson, help me understand, you mentioned small, medium, and large airports. How does Statesville, Concord, and Charlotte stack up to that? Obviously, Charlotte would be large, but where does Concord come in there? Are they small or medium?
Concord is considered a small hub airport, meaning they have air service. There are a lot of general aviation, which is the corporate and the private owners, but they also have Allegiant Airlines. So, that puts them into what they call the small hub category, whereas we're a general aviation airport, but we are probably one of the larger general aviation airports in the state, and hopefully getting close to being one of the busier ones. But, and then you've got medium hub airports like your Rowley's and your Ashfels, and then your large hubs are your Charlottes and Chicagos and Atlantas.
Thanks, Chairman.
Sure.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Kent Green will give us an update on the weekend's activities in response to Hurricane Florence, and what the additional ongoing commitments look like they'll be for the county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Need to begin by saying I've never been so thankful for a weekend to come to an end. It was very busy. All of our partners, they came together in our Emergency Operations Center beginning Monday morning, or, excuse me, Friday morning at 8:00, working diligently to plan for an event that ultimately spared Iredell County, for which we are extremely grateful. The state was involved with our operations. They knew what we were doing every step of the way. The briefing that we had last week, I think, was very instrumental in getting the information out to the public. In my 32 years of this work, that's the first time I've ever been involved in a meeting to of that scale with all of the partners here and describing their preparation actions. So, I think that was a good idea, and I would like to see more of that in the future. At this point, we have closed the Emergency Operations Center. We've terminated our state of emergency locally. The state, of course, is still under their state of emergency due to the ongoing flooding and other issues in the eastern part of the state. The federal government has also declared a state of emergency. That does not mean that we're in, under a presidential, presidentially declared disaster. That will come later. As with the state, they have to declare first, which they will, of course, based on the damage that the eastern part of the state has sustained. At this point, we've returned to normal operations, normal staffing. All of our fire departments and rescue squads staffed up during the weekend. The storm moved much slower than we anticipated, which took us through Sunday evening. We really expected that impact sometime Saturday, so it was about 24 hours behind schedule. But, with a hurricane that size, that was as large as the states of North Carolina and South Carolina together, it's very difficult to control it or let alone predict where it will end up. Again, we were very fortunate. We received just over five inches of rain on average countywide, some pockets of higher rainfall, but that's pretty much the average. We suffered no washout of roads. We had the South Yadkin River that did get out of its banks, but again, did not pack any roadways. At one point, we had about 3,000 people without power. That was restored rather quickly, given the events going on elsewhere in the state. As of today, we have no one without power. Power outages were caused by downed trees. When the ground was saturated and a small gust of wind came along, toppled that tree and took out some power lines. But, again, we're back to normal operations today. The state, at this point, is requesting a couple of things. They have requested some, excuse me, some organizations to already deploy to the eastern part of the state. As for Iredell County, the Sheriff's Office has deployed six individuals to Columbus County to provide security and support. Public Health has deployed two individuals, two public health nurses, to Pender County to assist them with their recovery efforts. And Mooresville Fire Rescue has deployed a Type 1 Swiftwater team to the Kinston area, which is the Regional Coordination Center East, sort of the staging area, as they go wherever they need them to go throughout the rest of the state. In addition to that, they've asked all of Emergency Management Coordinators to provide a list of resources that may become available or are already available, so that they, when they do get a request, they know exactly where to look and who to call, and they can get those resources moving rather quickly. So, at that point today, we're, again, have returned to normal operations. I'd like to thank all the volunteer agencies, especially those guys that aren't getting paid, and they volunteered to staff their stations nearly 24 hours a day in most cases. All the support we've gotten from the Board Administration that sat with us in the Emergency Operations Center for hours on end, provided lunch on one day, we much appreciated that. The jail, they also provided meals for us, as well as the Communications Center, which was staffed normal at almost a double capacity in preparation for the call volume that came in. So, lots of people to thank. I'm sure I will leave out someone, so I will leave it at that, and be glad to answer any questions you may have.
I think it'd be interesting, people would be interested to hear a little bit about the backup work we did in ECOM for Carteret County, and some of the unique challenges that they faced with the radio communications, and how we address that with volunteers from our ham radio routes.
Absolutely. This is something relatively new, to my knowledge, where they assigned counties on the coast a partner county inland, so that should an instance occur where their 911 capabilities or radio capabilities were damaged or inoperable, their 911 calls would roll to another center that was not yet impacted by the storm. In Carteret County, which is on the coast, one of the most southernmost counties in the state, right on the water, of course, took a nearly direct impact from this hurricane. Although they did not lose 911 services, the volume in itself did cause a few calls, a few 911 calls, to roll to our center, in which case, we would use the Viper radio network, the state-owned radio network, to communicate that information back to Carteret County. Unfortunately, their Viper site in their county was flooded and became inoperable. So, we had no communication with those folks until our Amateur Radio Emergency Service, or ARI's, staff, who are all volunteers, came in. We set up a special radio for them, hung a new antenna outside, and they were able to communicate with Carteret County within about 15 minutes. And they did that until their Viper site came back up. It continues to amaze me what those amateur radio operators can do. Some cases, our several thousand-dollar radio has difficulty communicating within our own county, and their $400 radio can talk to someone in Arizona. It's just, it amazes me, the technology and what they can do with that technology. But, they did serve Carteret County. They stayed in the EOC as long as we were there and open, and they continue to assist, and will probably some of those folks deploy as well to the eastern part of the state to assist as their folks begin to cycle out.
Thank you Kent. Any comments?
I just had a couple of things. Kent, I'd like to thank you guys, all the Emergency Management Staff, the ECOM, Sheriff, for all the work they did to prep EMS, fire departments, rescue squads, ladies' auxiliaries, the amateur radio people. Everybody did a great job working together. We had so much feedback from the public. The media's help getting all the information out was phenomenal. Duke Power, Energy United, all of these companies that were at our briefing on Thursday, you heard the gentleman say, out of all the counties they are in, we're the only ones invited them to the briefing and the preparedness situations. So, I'd rather be ready and spared than not ready and behind the eight ball. But, I just wanted to say thank you, and I wanted to ask Beth just to elaborate briefly on the fact that we're tracking everything for hopefully some FEMA recovery on all the expenditures and costs that went into this. I'll let you touch base on that.
Anytime we declare a state of emergency and we activate our EOC, we do track all of our time, all of our resources. Anything like that, we track, just in case there is a possibility where we can apply for federal reimbursement. We will also track all of that with deployed assets, so whatever equipment we send, any personnel that go, we will make sure that we keep a very good accounting of that, because even, it may not be that something in our county is eligible, but maybe those resources that are going to assist another county are eligible. So, we keep a very good accounting. Finance will do and has done a great job, and will continue to do a good job. Kent and his staff, their kind of mission control, even though the storm is over and we have lifted the state of emergency for Iredell County, his staff is still working because we're providing support and resources to the eastern end as well. And I'm going to say this, Kent's group, bless Misty's heart, she answered that public information line, and she got some very interesting calls, and she was always incredibly courteous and helpful. Kent and Jody and Josh and David, everybody was wonderful, and they were there from sunup to sundown, and they were there to help in any way they could, provide resources. Our businesses, we had businesses calling saying, "What can I help? What can I do? What do you need? What resources do you need? Do you need any?" We had one that actually housed a Swiftwater rescue team from Virginia. They opened up their doors. One of our local companies opened up their doors and allowed them to stage there and kind of stay there overnight until they were deployed somewhere else. So, churches, volunteer groups, they made goodie bags for our first responders and for our law enforcement and for our EMS groups preparing for this weekend. So, this community is amazing as far as the outreach and the assistance and the support. So, you know, it is a collective group, and we are in incredibly capable hands with all of our first responders, volunteer, professional. They are highly skilled, they are well-trained, and thank goodness, we did not have to put those resources to use, but they were ready and incredibly capable to respond to anything that came our way. So, I was incredibly very thankful and thrilled to see all those resources there and the capability and the knowledge and expertise that we had. It's amazing. We should all feel very, very fortunate with the people that we have.
And also wanted to say thank you also to the businesses that allowed the trucks and energy trucks and all the equipment to stage. And I reached out to the law enforcement agencies, and they kept extra patrols in those areas to make sure the equipment was safe, and I want to thank the law enforcement agencies for doing that. And Beth, it meant a lot to Kent's team and others, that the top administration was in the room with them most of the time that we were there. That was great leadership. I just wanted to give you a little feedback from your people. They appreciated that.
Thank you. Well, Susan and I both felt that that was important, that we'd be there to support. If they're going to be there and work around the clock and we need to be there...
The important part is, our leadership doesn't ask our staff to do anything they're not willing to do.
Thank you for that.
Any additional comments?
And we really appreciated lunch on Saturday.
I think they were all thankful to see Chick-fil-A walk in the door. But, I will say this, the fact that we had so many commissioners, commissioners called, came by, checked on us, you guys were engaged, checking, "Do you need anything?", thank you for that. That means a lot. It really, truly does mean a lot. The sheriff was, had someone staged there with us the whole time, came by and checked on us on a regular basis. Our local police departments did, so it's good to have that kind of support.
And I think it's going to be important, too, you know, listening to the coverage on this, the impacts down east in North Carolina, at one, I think there's, at one point, was 1,200 road closures, and got a lot of major impacts and things that we need to keep in mind, and if possible, down the road, help with some of that where possible.
Well, that's a good segue into what I was going to say.
Oh, sorry.
But, you know, we were blessed to be spared, but many of our fellow Carolinians were not spared, and will continue to deal with this situation, not just in the next few days as rivers crest, but the next few weeks, and in many cases, months. And some people will be displaced for extended periods of time. And you think, the number of schools and government facilities that were, have been inundated and will be out of service, those people need to go somewhere. And I've asked our county manager to reach out to both Carteret County, since we have a relationship with them, having been established with the ECOM backup, as well as the state, to determine if there can be an organized sort of clearinghouse process where we can partner with specific areas. I know that many of our local churches are already reaching out to congregations and other areas and making facilities and people available. And of course, as a government, we will send resources as they are requested, as our Sheriff's Department and Swiftwater Recovery Teams and EMS and Rescue and all those other resources that we have. We don't deplete ourselves that we can't service our own county, but we do want to share those assets. But, I'm going to ask the residents of this county to keep your ears to the ground and stay tuned for opportunities that we may have collectively and individually to be able to help people that are in need and who are going to be displaced. I know that when Katrina hit, there was a large number of folks from New Orleans who had no place to live. You can't live in a FEMA trailer for an extended period of time. You can't maintain that kind of environment that's conducive for children to learn in school if they just don't feel like they have any kind of security or stability in their, where they're living. So, we don't know exactly how that's going to present itself or form, but we're taking the initiative to reach out and see if the state can't come up with a way to be able to match needs with resources and volunteers that are willing to take rooms in their homes or their mother-in-law apartments that may not be filled, or whatever resources they have, to open our hearts and our wallets and be able to help out our fellow Carolinians. The next time, the shoe may be on the other foot. So, and I know that people are looking for ways to help, so we'll try to figure out a good way to link up resources to needs. Okay, well, thank you very much Kent, and please...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
...convey our appreciation and admiration to all of the staff and departments that worked with you, and just get that word out.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, Jody. All right. We will now move on to public hearings. We have three this evening. The first, item 7.1, is a public hearing in regards to text amendments to the Land Development Code, and Mr. Matthew Todd will tee that up for us.
Good evening to the board. Before I get started, I want to first introduce our floodplain administrator, Kathy Wolf, from our office. She's here to make sure I stay and keep on track, but um...
Don't get over his head.
We do have some text amendments tonight. It's just by coincidence that it is dealing with floodplain development. And as we've seen here recently, the impacts of developing in the floodplain do have a direct result on your emergency services. But just some facts about Iredell County, there's over 8,000 parcels that intersect a floodplain here in the county, over, almost 16,000 acres in a floodplain, an AE zone, which is essentially a hundred-year floodplain. That's just an image of a rain event, 3.3 inches back in 2017. And you can see, I mean, just from a three-inch rainfall, the top of those fence posts are almost covered. But earlier this year, the state contacted, I guess, our office, I mean, all local offices about a new model ordinance, and we took that as an opportunity to make some changes to ours, to match the state model ordinance, and also to consolidate our floodplain regulations into one document. We often got questioned from developers or people out in the community to see our floodplain ordinance, and we basically had a reference to our whole land development code, which is over 300 pages. If this text amendment goes through, we'll be able to hand them an appendix, which is about 30 pages, and they can read all the regulations related to development in the floodplain. So it's definitely gonna be an easier document for the end user to have. The planning board did vote unanimously for these recommendations and went line by line through the proposed text amendments. And I'd be happy to answer any questions specifically for those text amendments.
Mr. Todd, you said that there was only just like one or two parcels that would be included in this particular flood damage protection ordinance that was not included in the last one, correct?
Well, and that's with that next item on the agenda
The map.
With the map change. Yeah, this would affect all properties that are in the floodplain.
Any further questions or comments? At this time, I will open the public hearing and do not have anybody that has signed up, but I would inquire of everyone in attendance if anyone would like to be heard. Now, seeing or hearing none, close this public hearing and ask if there is a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We approve and recommend the approval of Appendix G, the Iredell County Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, along with the associated zoning text amendments to the current land development code, making, finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan, and that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest and furthers the goals of the 2030 Horizon Plan, because it aims to create compliance with NC general statutes, the NC flood insurance rate mapping program, and the federal FEMA standards.
Motion by Commissioner Hough. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Well, we move on to item 7.2, which is another public hearing regarding the adoption of the new flood maps, which, once again, Matthew Todd will share his wisdom and the wisdom of his staff.
This item actually is affecting one parcel on the Mecklenburg County line, and Mecklenburg County had revised flood maps this year. It's done every so often for the different counties throughout the state, and it was Mecklenburg County's turn. Well, on those panels, the way they work is there was a small impact in Iredell County, and you can see it on the screen. It's not showing up the best of color, but it's that very, it's 1.2 acres right here, and this is the county line, so it comes across onto this one parcel. Before, it was not in the flood zone, and based on their new studies, it is gonna be part of the 100-year floodplain again. And that is just a 1.2 acre parcel. The property owners were notified, and adjacent owners were notified, and we've not heard any input back from those at this time. With that same map panel that needs to be amended, there was also, this is back from 2009, the developer, went through an amendment process based on studies, to amend the floodplain with their development, and it's on the same map panel, so it's just being included with the previous one. We're just showing it because it is part of that map panel. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on this.
Any questions for Mr. Todd? Any comments? At this time, I will now open the public hearing, and once again, there appears to be no one to have signed up. I would inquire if there's anyone in the audience that would like to be heard on this matter. Seeing or hearing none, close this public hearing and ask if there is a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we adopt this new federal emergency management agency's floodplain map program to be adopted and updating the flood insurance study and the flood insurance rate maps firm. These changes, that must be adopted by November 16th of 2018.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Padding a thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, move on to item 7.3, which is a public hearing for a resolution regarding issuance of not to exceed $9 million of Public Finance Authority Educational Facility Revenue Bonds, Series 2018, for the benefit of Davidson Day School or an affiliate thereof. I believe we have Ms. Kristin Kinsey, who is going to present that request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kristin Kirby with McGuire Woods in Raleigh. We are bond counsel in connection with this financing. We are before the commission tonight for a public hearing and approval in principle related to the bonds for Davidson Day School. These bonds would be used to both refinance existing taxable debt of the school that was used to finance their current campus in the town of Davidson, as well as finance the purchase of a parcel of land in Iredell County for future development. We're here before you because, under the federal tax code, in order to issue this type of bonds, we need a public hearing and approval by the elected governing body that has jurisdiction over the site of the project. So specifically asking you to approve the portion related to the land purchase, which is approximately 1.3 million of the total $9 million of bonds. As a reminder to the commissioners, these bonds would not be a debt of the county or affect your legal debt limit or debt ratios. No funds of the county are pledged to pay these bonds, rather, they are repaid solely from amounts paid by the borrower under the documents related for the bonds.
Thank you for the last sentence.
It's always the most important.
Any further questions of Ms. Kirby? All right, at this time, I will open the public hearing and inquire if there was anyone else signed up to, for this, to be heard on this matter. Other than Ms. Kirby signing up, there is no one else. No one in the audience wants issues to be heard. Close this public hearing and ask if there is a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the resolution. In principle, the issuance of not to exceed $9 million of Public Finance Authority Educational Facilities Revenue Bonds, Davidson Day School, Series 2018, for the benefit of Davidson Day School or an affiliate thereof.
A motion by Commissioner Hough. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And we thank the board members and the officers of Davidson Day School, who have come up here, along with Ms. Kirby, and wish you good luck and Godspeed.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to some administrative matters that were appropriate for our consent agenda, that were reviewed at the pre-agenda meeting at 5:00, which I'll remind folks is a public meeting, and the public is invited at any time to hear our discussions on these somewhat technical issues. But at this time, I'd ask Ms. Jones to please summarize those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item was a request from the project manager to consider city annexation of property adjacent to the public safety complex. There was a request from the Parks and Recreation for approval of Budget Amendment Number Nine in the amount of $5,300 for contracted soccer referees. A request from the Finance Department to approve Budget Amendment Number Ten to appropriate fund balance in the East Iredell, or, excuse me, I did that again, East Alexander Fire Department for a grant match, and that's in the amount of $10,000. A request from the Finance Department to approve a resolution to accept the lowest bid for the financing of the fiscal year 2019 vehicles. I'm sorry, hold on. That is not on the consent agenda. That will be an item that we will discuss. I apologize. A request from the Finance Department for the adoption of a resolution and authorization to sell two vacant parcels of land recently acquired through tax foreclosure sale. A request from the Sheriff's Office to approve application for and acceptance of the 2018 JAG grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, and approve Budget Amendment Number Eleven in the amount of $16,406. A request from the Planning and Development Department to consider calling for a public hearing in regard to text amendments to the land development code, and that public hearing is set for October the 2nd. A request from Tax Administration for approval of August refunds and releases. A request from the deputy clerk to the board for approval of minutes from the meeting on September 3rd, 2018. And a letter of support for the additional request for FAA grants, grant funds to be used for economic development purposes at Statesville Airport, and these are 100% grants. And this is to send a letter of support in regards to these application requests for these grants.
Any further comment on any of the consent items? Is there a motion?
Most approved.
Motion by Commissioner Hough to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We'll now circle back to item 8.4, which is a request from the Finance Department to approve a resolution to accept the lowest bid for the financing of FY 2019 vehicles. Ms. Deb Alford.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I was tasked with the duty of securing installment financing for our vehicles in the fiscal year 2019 budget. On August 24th, we went out for bid. We had 13 bidders respond. Our lowest bid was to Zion Bank with an interest rate of 2.81%. There was only 60 basis points between all 13 bidders. It was very competitive, and we feel very appreciative that we were able to secure such a low interest rate. This will finance 39 vehicles. 24 of those are for the sheriff, and that also includes four ambulances, which are at a price of almost $750,000. The resolution that I'm asking you to pass is to award this bid to Zion Bank for $2,050,000 with an interest rate of 2.81%.
Are there any questions from Ms. Alford? Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Any further comment? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board approves the resolution authorizing execution and delivery of an installment finance agreement, a security agreement, and related documents in connection with financing of various vehicles and equipment for the county of Iredell County.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alford. Thank you for your great negotiating skills. Okay, there are no announcements of vacancies for boards or commissions. There are no appointments this evening to boards or commissions. Is there any unfinished business? Hearing none. Is there any new business? Hearing none. I would ask if the county manager would please render her report.
My primary report was to give the board a quick briefing of this weekend and the events. Again, incredibly thankful that we didn't have to deploy assets locally, and thankful that we have resources that we can help our partners throughout the state. So I'm very proud of those individuals that have volunteered to deploy. We have some that have volunteered and others that are on the list that have said they're willing to go have called. So that speaks volumes to those individuals that are willing to go and help. I just wanted to also let the board know, and I think I've already told the board this, but when we went through the last bond issuance for the school bonds, we had our rating agency conference calls, and our ratings from all three agencies remain the same for our bond ratings. So that means that we are in great financial conditions. Nothing was changed, and thank you to finance for that, because they do a great job. So I wanted to make that a public announcement and let everybody know that our bond ratings remain the same.
That is great news. It's taxpayer tremendous amount of funds. Just as a, sort of a explanation point to your comments, I do want to give a special shout out to the Mooresville Chief of the Fire Department, Kurt Deaton, who, you know, has really taken a big-picture view of, you know, support to the county. Three of our four Swiftwater recovery teams are based out of qualified and fully staffed, are out of Mooresville. And he redeployed one to the Statesville area, and with his team, they scoured the county, looking at all the pinch points there that were likely to flood, and identifying those, and preparing to be able to deploy and assist residents if they became impassable. So, or if someone got in trouble. So I just wanted to particularly thank he and his team for the great work that they did for the benefit of the entire county. We've already had a closed session for economic development pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A4. There was no actionable items to come out of that discussion. Any further...
Did you have something else? Did we have something else?
Yes, sir. We actually, this is the second meeting of the month, and we need to have a public comment period.
Oh, it is the second meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I'll ask the press if they want to make a public comment.
[laughing]
Well, hearing none and seeing none, I will open the public comment period, ask if anyone wants to be heard. Seeing or hearing none, I will close the public comment period. Thank you. I did fly over that. Okay, is anything else for the good of the order? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Before...
Motion by Commissioner Norman to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. We are adjourned.